For the Public School Board to order for Monday, September 9, 2019. And I will have Heidi do the roll call and verification of quorum.
Mr. Ebel.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Fang.
Here.
Ms. Portson.
Here.
Ms. Rannell.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Present.
Mr. Wade.
Present.
Ms. Erler.
Here.
And Mr. Morgan Roth.
Here.
We are all here. We have quorums.
Thank you, Heidi. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, Community Partnership and Recognition. And we are recognizing Dan Hoppy, who is a 2019 Wisconsin History Teacher of the Year Award. And John Volendorf is here to provide us with some background.
Good evening. It's my privilege tonight to be here to help recognize Mr. Dan Hoppy, SPAS Social Studies teacher. Mr. Hoppy was selected in June as the 2019 Wisconsin History Teacher of the Year, an award presented annually by the Gilder Lehrman Institute of American History. Mr. Hoppy's been a Social Studies teacher at SPAS since 2002 and is liked and more importantly, respected by his students and colleagues because of his ability to build relationships based on trust, respect, and a genuine love of learning. Dan sets high expectations for the students with whom he works and diligently pushes students to exceed them. Mr. Hoppy has also served as our Student Senate Advisor for the past seven years. And I've grown to trust his insight in integrating student leadership into our school processes and events. In other words, Dan's leadership has consistently benefited his students, our colleagues, and our school. Mr. Hoppy consistently demonstrates a high level of professionalism as a teacher and student leader. He passionately seeks learning and leadership opportunities outside of his regular schedule, and especially during the summer. Whether it's posting a motivational video for his students on YouTube before AP testing, traveling all over the world, I think the last stop was Vietnam this August, or going to conferences or serving as a national test reader and grading AP exams, Mr. Hoppy's work gives our students an enhanced opportunity for success. He's one of the best teachers in one of the bigger high schools in the state of Wisconsin. Most importantly, Dan Hoppy is a dedicated, talented teacher worthy of this special recognition. He's a great teacher and an even better person who routinely does creative things in the classroom just to create learning opportunities for our students. Congratulations, Mr. Hoppy. We're proud of you and thankful you're here.
Absolutely. You've got to say a few words, don't you? You've got to say a few words.
Yeah, I thank you for those very kind words from Dr. Volendorf. It was quite an honor to receive this award. I was nominated by a fellow teacher and I also serve on the Wisconsin Council for the Social Studies. And so I was nominated by a teacher from around the state who serves on that board as well. And so I was humbled by the nomination and even more humbled by the award to receive that. So I enjoy serving in the Stevens Point School District and hope to continue for many, many years and hopefully inspire the next students. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations and thanks for everything you've done for your students, for your colleagues, for SPAS and for your school district. Awesome.
All right, I think we're on three.
You know the drill. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Our daughter had children.
Congratulations. Love, love looking at all these photos, all these paintings, all this artwork.
And just to note, in addition to a $1,000 honorarium, SPAS will receive a core archive of American history books and Gilder Lehrman educational materials. And Dan will also receive recognition at a ceremony in Wisconsin. So, again, congratulations, Dan. Moving on to item five, Public Comments. No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who would like to provide input with respect to an agenda item this evening? No one is present. Moving into item six, Presentations A is our Communications Report, Sarah O'Donnell.
I can get it. Yeah, it's fine. We'll walk through it. Hi, happy September. A few quick pieces from the dashboard media coverage for August. We had mentioned that the Stevens Point Journal, Allen, had come out and done kind of a nice pre-piece that did publish, a very nice comprehensive referendum update piece. And we also saw coverage surrounding the board vacancy and how that vacancy would be filled, which I think hopefully helped, you know, we saw some really great candidates come out. Our back-to-school coverage ranged from that kind of general, you know, here's, can we see your back-to-school pictures too, because everybody likes to see those. We also saw a behind-the-scenes look at what our tech team does throughout the summer and specifically how they help us get ready for school. So it was nice to see kind of that behind-the-curtain piece come from Channel 7. And then we also participated in some statewide trend pieces put out by USA Today, specifically one about vaccination trends across the state and how we're seeing those actually decrease a little bit. So, I do just want to take a moment and thank those. Back-to-school time is probably, we get the most amount of media attention during the school year just as folks are thinking about it, it's top of mind, and frankly, it's kind of an easy piece for a reporter at that time of year. So folks are super swamped as we're going back to school and took the time to serve as those experts and offer their expertise to the audiences that those reporters were trying to reach. So that coverage is not possible without people recognizing the importance of that and taking the time to do that. So I want to just really thank the folks that did. Also on the dashboard, I just wanted to draw attention to the district mobile app. Trish, you and I had some good conversations about it. Looking at it between, just from month to month, and we'll continue to watch this on a trend data, we saw a 41% increase in downloads between the two. Yep, so we saw some movement there. Still not where I'd like to be, obviously, but a good step in the right direction. And we saw a 534% increase in page views. So we know that those who are downloading it are using it, which is obviously really important to me, having, you know, taking the time to generate that content, not just from my end but from others' end as well. I want to make sure that folks are using it. So good to see that folks are taking the time to see that.
Oh, on your phone. It's so easy. It's such a good website. Such a good app.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Finally, at your places, we wanted to provide you the same mug and district pop sockets and Biscoff cookies. I think they're delicious. And then the little bookmarks. So traditionally, at this time of year, as you all know, we do our kickoff at SPAS. And given the construction there, it just was not something that we were going to be able to pull off. And even if we could pull it off, weren't sure it was a good idea this year. And so instead of doing that, we wanted to try to kind of still have an opportunity to create that feel of togetherness and being together at the start of school. And so we put together a little video that I'm going to try to play. Sound quality is what it is, is where we're at. And then every staff member also received the same stuff that you had at your place. So if you'll bear with me for just a minute. See if I can get this going for you. And I hear the feedback and I'm sorry.
I'm Craig Gerlach, Superintendent of Schools. I hope all of you had an enjoyable, relaxing, and healthy summer break and rejuvenated to return for another school year.
There is so much happening in the buildings. We have been able to access additional financial resources through the operational and the facilities referendum to make some incredible headway with our district. And now we get to do that. And that's the excitement about this year. We're going to be able to implement, we're beginning already to implement, the facilities referendum. And we're also, we've begun implementation of that operational referendum.
On the first day of school, our students are going to jump on a bus or maybe walk to school. They're going to laugh, they're going to smile, and they're all going to walk into our schools, excited to be there. They're going to be excited to see you. They're going to be excited to see their friends and make new ones. They're going to have so many experiences over the course of the year. Some of those experiences are going to be great. Some of them might not be so great. At the end of the year, it's my hope that they leave with a smile and the enthusiasm and appreciation for the work that we did as a staff. And quite frankly, that's going to be determined by the relationships that we create, create with all of these students, because all of these students need us.
The impact that you make goes beyond what happens every single day in the classroom. It's the relationships that you build. That sense of trust is what makes us all learn. And that sense of trust also creates school cultures that is invaluable.
Every single person that I talk to, every single one of them can come up with the name of at least one, usually two or three, teachers who they believe significantly impacted their life, their trajectory, their success.
It's finding those moments that you just kind of latch on to, seeing the success of the students and seeing the joy that your presence has on them.
The work that we do each day is vital to the intellectual growth as well as the social and emotional growth of our students. Our students, parents, and quite frankly, our entire community is looking forward to and counting on us to make a difference in the lives of all of our students.
I take such great pride in this school district and feel so blessed that not only was I able to graduate from a phenomenal high school, but be a part of this community. I'm forever grateful on the education my children experienced in this district and the opportunities that they have had, and the pride that I have to be a part of this district. I'm really proud of our students, I'm proud of our staff, and you should be too.
When the going is tough and when days are a day of struggle, it's really important to recognize the great work that you're doing. You're not going to know, as a teacher, as a staff member, what day, what moment, what act is going to significantly impact the life of a child for now and for the future.
We are so fortunate to have an outstanding and dedicated staff, which is clearly the most important resource that we have in our school district.
What's really, really important to me is taking care of our people. That's the most valuable asset in this business. And we need to make sure that we've got, and we're telling staff to take care of themselves, that they can do a very good job of taking care of our students. I feel it's our job in the Educational Services Department to make sure that the staff have the resources and programs to do the very best job they can do at making sure that they're instructing the students based on those standards.
I've been very impressed with the dedication of our teaching staff, willing to put in extra time to learn new software and new skills and find ways to integrate new tools into their curriculum. That takes a lot of time, takes dedication and a willingness to take some risks and try something new.
We're here for each other. Not one of us can do this job without another individual. So rely on the people around you. Don't feel like you have to do it all, you know? This job is never-ending. Our work is never-done. But we can't do this job if we're not at the top of our game and taking care of ourselves.
Take that journey and enjoy it. And when you need that help, just reach out to other staff members, other people, and just embrace, embrace the challenges, but really embrace that the growth and the journey that the students get to go on.
And know our educators and staff in the district are dedicated to kids.
We at BLIS are so very grateful for the work that you do every single day. And we certainly recognize the hard work that goes on and what matters most is in those classrooms.
I think what we need to focus on is just each other.
To know that they're looking for you.
Each one of you will have a profound impact on our students.
All of us play a unique role. This is about opportunities and experiences and helping each child learn and grow.
Every single one of us working for the district has unique talents, unique skills, and a heart and a commitment to supporting students.
As we begin the new school year, please know that I appreciate your work, that I value you as a person, and that you make a difference in the lives of kids.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Very nice. That was great. Nice, Sarah.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Any comments or questions of Sarah? Sarah somehow figures out how to pull stuff like that together. And you show up and she asks you questions and you have no clue what it is that you've said, actually. But her ability to provide that message, I think you did a great job this year. I know all of us would have preferred that it was at SPAS and that everyone was together because that's such an incredible feeling of energy and experience and the whole district-wide thing. But there's so many exciting things happening at SPAS right now, so we have to celebrate it the way we can. So, all right, thank you.
Absolutely. And Heidi reminded me, I was to mention and didn't, one of the things that we typically do at SPAS is recognition of the Education Enrichment Fund grant recipients. We were not able to do that this year. We are planning to do stories throughout the year, so covering them a little bit more in-depth than maybe a way that we haven't before. So different, but I think still good. I do just want to mention them tonight, though. Jackie Zuki Karch received an award for her program, "Accessing the Voice Inside Me", that will take place at Bannock Elementary. Daniella Korsinski and Dorothy O'Connor, Jefferson Eagle Canine Guest Educators at Jefferson Elementary. Ginny Williams for a Lunch Bunch program at Ben Franklin Junior High School. Jody Tuskowski for Gizmos and Gadgets and Inventions Oh My at Washington Elementary. Josh and Kelsey Hames for Communities That Compost Grow the Most, which will be piloted at PJ Jacobs and Roosevelt Elementary. Victoria Schultz for Children's Theater Intensives with the Playhouse Theater Group. Kim Bowden, Accessibility for All, which will be kind of finishing off that playground over at Jefferson, assisting in pouring that final play surface at Jefferson Elementary. And Mary Zinda and Fay Miller for the World of Peace Field Trips at the Stevens Point Sculpture Park. So thank you to all who applied to those, and we look forward to sharing more in-depth about what they do with those funds.
Thank you. Thank you for the information on that.
Thank you to the Community Foundation for supporting that Education Enrichment Fund. And we encourage anyone that would like to help continue to support those unique innovative projects that our staff bring forward to consider making a donation to that fund. There are always way more applicants than there are recipients, and they're just some really incredibly unique projects that our staff pull together. All right, moving into the Superintendent's Report.
I would first like to say congratulations to Ed Morgan Roth and welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Your experience will be very valuable as we move forward. I was going to go over the opening of school. Sarah just did that. Sarah did a wonderful job putting this video together. We were not able to do this at SPAS, for the obvious. I was there a number of times over the last month. It just would have not worked. When you say, "We would have rather been at SPAS, all but Washington Elementary," they were very, very, very appreciative that they were able to be in their buildings. And I'll talk more about that when I go through the referendum projects as it related to the beginning of the year for them. But a very smooth start, knock on wood, we're only a week into it. October 24th is the Regional WASB Workshop at Rothschild. I think Heidi sent something out, if you're interested in going to that. I am registered for that if anyone wants to carpool. We should do some emailing. We had 31 new teachers this year. We had 26 classified staff this year. This is the smallest group of new hires in my four years here. And I think that says something. I think we're turning the corner in a lot of ways. But it was really telling when we had our opening week of in-service for new staff. We had doubled that three years ago. So I think that's just really good news. That's all I have. Are there any questions for me?
Not a question, but just a comment. I know we weren't able to have that opening at SPAS, but I have to tell you, just as a board member, just my opinion, watching all those kids in that video, I just think that's really awesome. It's really exciting at every level, from the buses into the classrooms with the teachers and that. It's just inspiring to me. So I'm glad we got to do it.
Thank you.
Hey Craig, I've got a, just a new guy with a question. Would you say that, you said 31 was the lowest number of new teachers and new staff? Is that right?
31 teachers, 26, what did they say? Classified.
Classified, okay. And in the four years you've been here, would you say that was mostly because of fewer retirements? Maybe it's a stupid question. Fewer retirements or fewer people that left for other opportunities?
Our retirements are fairly consistent.
Okay, so that means less people, fewer people.
We have fewer people leaving to do something else or quite frankly, take another job in education somewhere.
Right.
Less turnover.
Less turnover, okay. I wasn't sure if it was less retirements or less or both.
Less turnover.
All right.
Any other questions?
Can I just make one comment? I just want to echo that. So Barb, Meg, I think Chris was there, went to the opening morning breakfast where we were introduced to the teachers. And that's just such a delightful introduction. But you're absolutely right, there were very, the group of teachers was small, the smallest that I've seen since I've been on the board five and a half years. And I am really, frankly, really proud of that, that we're keeping, we've kept a lot of teachers. And I think a lot of that has to do with what has happened in the last year that started with this board. So kudos to you for.
Well, I think it's what's happened in the last three, four years. Really, it's, we're moving forward. I can feel it and I hear it.
All right, we are moving into item seven, which is our Consent Agenda. And the Consent Agenda this evening includes the minutes of August 12, 2019, approval of the schedule of monthly bills, and employment recommendations. Do I have a motion?
Approved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions?
Are we doing everything together or are we doing the bills separately?
No, we're doing them all together, but we'll do a roll call on the bills. If you have a question, we can pull them out.
No, I don't have a question. I just wanted to know what we were voting on specifically.
Okay, so if no one has any comments or questions, I will have Heidi call the roll because of the bills.
Ms. Fang.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Portson.
Yes.
Ms. Rannell.
Yes.
Ms. Erler.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving into item B, which is our Business Services Human Resources Committee Report. And I'm going to turn that over to Mike. We did not have a meeting, but we do have an action item.
We did not have a meeting, but we are here to fill the Citizen Committee position on the committee, which is interesting because we had one committee vacancy, now we have two. We just so happen to have two applicants, two candidates for that. So I don't know if the board objects, but I don't know of a reason why we wouldn't fill both with the two applicants.
We noted that for the agenda, just in the event we were under this situation. And Mike is chair, we typically have the committee chair make recommendation as to those appointments. Do you want to read the names of the two candidates? And maybe a little bit of background on each of them?
Yeah, there's two candidates, and I may not pronounce this right, Ari Vang, who is, works at McCain Foods, has a master's degree in HR management, which is of interest because the Business Services Committee is now combined with Human Resources. And also, the other candidate is Ted Kowalski. Ted has lived in the community for a long time and would like to serve on the committee. So I would, if it's acceptable, I would move to appoint both of the candidates to fill those two citizen positions.
I'll second that.
Any discussion or questions?
I'll just make one comment. Ari Vang serves on the Community Foundation Board of Directors, and you will find her to be a wonderful board member or a wonderful committee member.
I have worked with her as well, so I do know her.
Yeah.
Ditto.
Yeah.
So all those in forward of the motion with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Moving on to item nine, Student Services. A Annual Resolution Regarding Expulsion/Independent Hearing Officer.
We have been using an independent hearing officer for expulsions for the last, this is going into our third year. And we have to annually make a recommend or an approve action on, excuse me, utilizing an independent hearing officer. And you can see in the motion, I'm suggesting that we include three firms, Godfrey &amp; Con, John Thiel, who has been doing the work over the last year, and Von Bresen &amp; Groper. That gives us the ability to, in case one firm isn't available, because you'll know that when we have expulsions, we're under a time crunch. And so it gives us the flexibility to go from one firm to the next in the event that we don't have anyone. So my recommendation is to approve all of those, or, excuse me, those three firms.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll move to approve the use of an independent hearing officer to determine student expulsion cases as presented.
Second.
Any discussion or questions with respect to that? Ed?
Just a question. Is the independent hearing officer, are they making a recommendation to yourself and the board, or are they making the final decision?
We make a recommendation, when I say we, administration make a recommendation to the independent hearing officer. That officer will actually conduct the expulsion hearing and then will make a recommendation to the school board. And the school board will then review it in closed session at the following board meeting, and then you would have to act on that.
So it's the school board's final decision?
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Moving into item 10, which is general, and we had appointment of new board member to committees, but we decided to do that in the special committee, so we do not need to do that. And so we move on to B, which is adoption of the Superintendent Goals for the 2019-2020 school year. We had a discussion, Craig presented this information to us at the board retreat this past summer, and he wanted to kind of go back and take a look at the wording and tweak it a little bit. And so that's in front of us this evening for review and approval.
My three goals are, first, to continue implementation of the five-year strategic plan. We are in year three, so that means next year we'll start to look at what the next process will look like after year five. The second is to increase employee engagement through various collaborative interactions with staff, using the School Perception Survey as a conduit for healthy conversations. I'm going to be getting into the buildings more often and putting together various venues where I can sit down and spend time with staff to hear and to listen and to eventually problem-solve. And then the last is to decrease. the last is to decrease the deficit by 50% for the 2021 school year.
Jeff, the, number two, are you going to use the School Perception surveys as a, as a metric to measure the effectiveness?
Yes. Right now, Sarah, I don't know if she stepped, there she has, she's pulling data that we're, we're going to be utilizing as it look, as it relates to what we're trying to, the issues that we want to respond to. And then, of course, how do you measure that? And we'll be using the metrics of that for, for measurement to see progress. And then, of course, I'll be reporting that back to the board at the end of the year.
And we've been using the same survey tool now for several years, so we're really in a great position to have some trends and really be able to key in on those areas where staff is reporting positive, that things are going well, and also maybe those indicators where staff is raising some questions or concerns about things and can, can then finally, you know, take a look at that over time, what's been happening, and then how maybe we can move the needle on some of those things moving forward.
Our data is very positive.
Very.
That said, there's always, always room for improvement.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion then, to move to approve these superintendent goals for the 2019-2020 school years as presented.
Second.
Any discussion or questions at all? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Item C is adoption of school board goals. Again, this was something that we discussed at the retreat, and we, of course, model our goals coming up through the schools, up through administration, up through the superintendent's goals, and then we're, we're the, our, we're the last. And so based on discussion that we had, I put together a couple of them, more than happy for us to make whatever changes. But based on our conversation, our two goals would be, the 2019-2020 school board goals would be oversight of implementation of the district's strategic plan, referendum facilities projects, and referendum operational objectives, and support of ongoing communication regarding implementation to internal and external stakeholders, students, parents, staff, and community. So I put that out to the board for comment, discussion, suggested changes. We had talked about the, the bottom line, that we as a board are really responsible for order, oversight of the superintendent's work with staff, again, to implement. And then also, board indicated the importance of being able to continue to communicate out to our community how we are doing that. So it wouldn't be the board doing the active communication, it would be the board through the superintendent and through Sarah and through all of our staff. For example, our principals have been incredible, the ones that have the projects of providing updated information on what's happening within their buildings, those types of things.
I think you captured it, the discussions nicely.
I would agree.
So we would be looking for a motion?
I, I will move to approve the 2019-20 school board goals as presented.
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Moving into item D, referendum project update.
We have a brief PowerPoint presentation that we are going to get up. Thank you, Sarah O'Donnell, for putting this together for me. I actually gave this presentation at the Sparta luncheon today, which is the Stevens Point Area Retired Teachers Association. They always have a, a nice gathering monthly, and they were very appreciative of the information. And speaking of Sparta, they have their 50th anniversary this year, which is impressive.
What's going on, Dan?
We're getting there. She shouldn't have.
You have to wait for it to warm up a minute.
Yeah.
It was, anyway.
What is this?
Oh, maybe like a clip, like a clip for your, yeah, that's what it is. Looks like maybe a clip, you know, like you can put it on a cube wall, hang a calendar, you know, picture or something. I think that's what it must be, because I'm pushing it here. As much as you say it, it pulls your crooked.
Haven't ever been on their van.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Right.
Were there any board members at the Sparta luncheon today? They didn't, they normally send us, I get, I don't know about anybody else, but I normally get an invitation from them. And I'm happy to go. I think they really appreciate us. I mean, I don't, no secrets. I just think they appreciate us.
Is Samantha Bitford still the president?
Yes.
Right, great. Appreciate it.
There we go.
She was my son's kindergarten teacher.
Oh, my goodness.
My first kid.
Samantha was?
Yeah. Those were the days-
She's awesome.
She visited each of the kids.
That buzz.
And tape recorded the conversations.
Brown falls.
To know them better.
Oh, she was amazing.
Fix it.
Wiggle the cord.
Wiggle the cord. Where's the cord?
Not sure what that buzz is.
Lightyear.
But this will be a presentation that I'll be utilizing and tweaking for various groups that are interested in learning where we're at with, with the project. And of course, we'll be updating them as we move through. We've talked about our four, our pillars that related to our strategic plan. And there's a, the fair argument that passing of this referendum actually both questions, really does address all four of our, our pillars. And of course, thank you to the school board for, for supporting this. Again, it was a unanimous board decision. Just going back, you know, a year, a year ago, if, if the board didn't support this unanimously, it wouldn't have moved forward. And of course, this is also a thank you to the community for stepping up and, and, and getting to the booth, and of course, for the, the strong results that we received as an outcome. This is old news for, for you as a board. The operational needs really concentrate on retention and, and recruiting of staff, technology. And we've talked a lot about that over the course of time, and we'll continue to, to talk and update in terms of where we're at. And of course, it creates a maintenance budget for the first time in a long time, whereas we can look at things on an annual basis and look forward rather than looking backwards. The approved facility needs, the infrastructure, the deferred maintenance, again, safety and security, the improved learning spaces. Today at, at Spart, I went into a lot greater detail and specifics about that. I've had an opportunity to spend time in all of the buildings that have been under construction, and about a month before, well, Cori, you and I went to Washington about a month ago, and it was like, oh my goodness. I had, I was sick to my stomach when I walked out. I thought, there is no way this building's going to get ready. Went two weeks later, and just, it's just amazing. They had over 200 workers in that building at one, at one time. And people were just, they were moving, and the different trades were, were working, and they worked so well together. We really have strong supervisors or superintendents that are in charge of all three of the buildings right now. So that was really exciting to see. Ben Franklin, if you've been through there, they did a beautiful job with the office. Again, this was just phase one with upgrading HVAC lighting, and of course, the entrance into the building. There'll be more, I believe, year three or finishing up Ben Franklin. Plover Whiting, you can see the concrete work. This, this is one project that'll go all, throughout the course of the school year through next summer. We believe that we'll be able to complete work throughout the school year without disrupting the learning process. Washington, my goodness gracious, I was there again today. And we actually had lunch catered out to the staff as an appreciation, as a thank you for what they, it's difficult enough to get ready for the first day of school as a staff member, and let alone what that building looked like a week ahead of time. I mean, they were pulling furniture out, cleaning furniture, and they did just a, a great job. But you can see, you just don't have an appreciation of what Washington looks like if you haven't been there before. So there's obviously some tweaks and a few things that'll have to get completed, or, I should say, refined over the next couple of weeks. Staff are, are really handling it very, very well. SpASH, my goodness gracious, about three weeks ago, I went in the boys' locker room, and they have to run the sewage from, that'll be in the, the bathrooms in the new commons area. Well, common sense would say just run it through the parking lot, because we're going to put a new parking lot and go to Second Street, path of least resistance. Well, the city, City Planning Commission wouldn't allow it because it would put too much pressure on the sewage system on Second Street. Well, we, we don't need to be backing up homes on Second Street. So we had to go through the building. And there was a, there was a nine-foot hole in the locker room. They had a skid steer with, with a, they, they had machinery in the, in the locker room. It was crazy. They had a hole the size of this room. It was just amazing. That's where the major connection for the underground plumbing was. So they're going to be challenged this year. John Volendorf and his staff, they're doing a great job. They're excited, very, very excited. However, we had to create a tunnel, the tunnel, to get around to, back to the, the field house from the main building, because you can't, because the tunnels, there's no tunnel. So it's just amazing to watch from the ground up, the construction.
Very, very exciting.
This is the, a refined schedule. You probably saw this, well, you did see this last year. This is much more refined. It's the design bid phase and construction phase for all of the buildings. We are on track. We are now working on, excuse me, Roosevelt, Kennedy, and PJ Jacobs, Jefferson, Madison. You can see how Nexus has put this in a, in a calendar. They're doing a very, very, very good job for us right now. Very impressed with their superintendents. Those are the, those are the guys that are in the buildings running the show. We are, we are, our bids have been coming in very competitively. We're very, very pleased where we're at with the whole project. And of course, this is the, the tax impact that obviously the community is interested in after, after the referendum was added to it. So you heard tonight, I think G Pope said, yeah, Wasso's up like at 11, 11, or that, I think he said that was the state average. DC Everett's was at like 10.6, actually that 10.03. But we're getting a great bang for our buck in, in the school district, and I'm very, very appreciative for, for the decision the board made, and the support that we're, that we've received from, from the community. Questions on our, our projects? Heidi, you want to turn that off?
I'll just break it.
So, so a few of us wound up touring Washington, and, and touring Plover Whiting. And again, I know staff would be, you know, people clearly are in and out of the buildings. If board members are interested in kind of being able to take a look, I'm sure the principals would be supportive of you showing up. And it was just daunting to take a look, to take a look at the, the construction that's been completed, and some of the things that still need to be completed. The gym, the, their gym, when we toured it, that was what, two weeks before school started? A little less than two weeks?
Probably, yeah.
About two weeks before school started. I mean, it was totally full, totally full of desks and chairs and tables and copy machines and bookcases and boxes, and everything was covered with, it wasn't even a thin layer of dust. It was like a thick layer of dust. And just thinking about, you know, the challenges staff have getting their classroom together when you don't have that. And then the challenge that they were, that they were all facing. And the other thing which, which I thought was just remarkable was that stuff just didn't get into that fight, into the gym by itself. I mean, staff was incredibly helpful and supportive and went way beyond to, to get all those classrooms emptied out at the end of the school year, and everything coordinated in one location. The other, the, the one other comment I want to make is, you know, Don Keck and his staff have a huge job every summer, getting in to do what they need to do in the buildings just to get ready for the next school year. And then the added level of work that they've had supervising, coordinating, and constantly cleaning the buildings as the construction was going on. Anyway, it's just, when, when you think about the amount of work that was done during the summer, our staff really, really needs a strong thank you from the board and from the community for, for, for just doing above and beyond what, what can be expected. So it's great. The tunnel, Craig said, I, I have not seen it yet. I'm not sure if it's completed yet, but it is. It's an end around over to the side of the building that, you know, and to think about the logistics of trying to get all those students-
I was expecting a, a tunnel like in a city, you know, when they're doing construction, they're building a new hotel, and they've got these cardboard or these plywood sheathing, and then you've got some kind of makeshift roof. And, and you've all been through them. It's just like, is this, doesn't seem very safe. Well, obviously, it's not, because we have a concrete tunnel. I mean, it's concrete. It's real concrete walls. It's, it's impressive. But that allows our kids to safely get around the building for, for physical education, as well as all of our community that come in for athletic events. They've got to, they've got to get to that for, for an entire year.
But does the tunnel have the lights like at O'Hare?
No.
Like going out to C there, Terminal C?
Just concrete. It's, no, a little steel.
Music.
No.
Not yet.
All right. Any questions at all with respect to the referendum project updates, bonding, operating, or referendum financial progress?
Oh, it's good to know that we're on task.
All right, so moving into item E, meeting dates, times, locations, and future agenda items. Our next school board meeting will be October 14th at 6:30 PM. And our Business Services Human Resources Committee will be meeting October 7th at 6:30, and Educational Services, October 7th at 7:30. I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.